We'll dispatch for the regular order of business and we have a presentation from Plattsburgh, Georgia, Chamber of Commerce. You're on.
Thank you. Thanks, thank you. I'm gonna stand over here so everyone can kind of pace a little too, so I apologize.
No, what you go see.
Okay. I don't know where it's at too, but thank you a lot for having us today. I'm really excited to be here. And some of the people in Israel already know why we're here. We've talked to some of them about it and hopefully some of you will be able to look at our website. But I'm just gonna tell you a little bit backstory. I've been with the Chamber now for five years and tourism is my, that's my charge. So one of the things that my boss told me as he was hiring me for my position is no one comes and stays in Clinton County for a week. And he's right. And we're here to change that. So we have the last two years had something called Strategic Tourism Planning Committee that is our steering committee for marketing at what we call the Adirondack Coast. I've got some members here today. Terry Maron from the Comfort Inn, recently opened Comfort Inn. Steve Carpenter from Liquor and Wine Warehouse. Bob Smith from, I blew this earlier. The Best Western in Smithfield and other businesses, we'll say that. And Kristy Kennedy is my colleague here. She's also with the Visitor Bureau in the Chamber of Commerce. And we've been meeting for the last year to figure out how we become a destination. How are people gonna get on planes, which they now can for the first time, and come and visit Clinton County? It's something that you can't really do right now. You don't really want to do right now. And that's an issue. So we've been talking about it. We have welcomed to our team Bob Harvey from EGR Communications. He is a consultant to us and has been working with us for the past few months, really going all over Clinton County. He has spent a lot of time in Rouse's Point, meeting with different businesses and organizations, and really circulated throughout, done an analysis. And now we're really putting paper and pen, you know, the pen to the paper and figuring out what our next steps are. You know, what should we look like as a destination? And the one thing that it keeps coming back to is the history. It's, you know, we have such a rich history that makes us unique, but the biggest problem with the history here in Clinton County is you can't experience it right now the way it is. Either the attractions aren't open, we just had a Fort Montgomery meeting that preempted this meeting. Or, you know, there's signs and really no interpretation, there's no storytellers. So we're trying to figure out how we change that to get people on planes to come here, stay a week, and also enhance our quality of life. So Bob, I'm gonna turn it over to you and let you talk a little bit about your story and your story and how we go forward from here.
Is that a good question? It's pregnant.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm Bob Harvey.
Too far over now.
Pardon?
Too far over now.
Yeah.
I'm Bob Harvey from EGR Communications. We plan tourism all over the world. Happy to be working here and discovering more than we thought before arriving and studying that we really have some serious opportunities here. I guess probably the first thing to talk about is why, if you look at the tourism that's here presently, why would we say there are serious opportunities looking at the future? Especially related to history, because history in this region has, has a history of its own history of failing tourism. If you look down at Fort Ticonderoga, they've struggled for decades to keep that thing open. They've struggled to find the right audiences for it and so on. So why would we say now, let's do something with history and it will pay off? And I think that's really something that needs to be addressed before we say, let's jump into it. The answer starts that communications when you were building the constituency for Fort Tyne was the assumption in the Adirondacks that you marketed to 100 million people that are within a day's drive. Essex County thrives on that, Vermont thrives on that. That's been the North Country mantra for how you market tourism. And in the past, marketing was advertising and buying and Sunday supplements. You'd walk by destination. The internet has changed how you communicate with people, how you find people. Now you can say, you're interested in history, I have history, let's talk about it. And you could be in the UK, you could be in France, you could be anywhere in Canada, anywhere in the States, and having that conversation would decide you had to be here. So we've enabled ourselves to talk more directly to people that really care about it in tourism. And we talked about using a rifle approach instead of the shotgun approach. And we're able to zero in on the people that really care about what you're saying and get there. Add to that, we have an airport here. It's been built on the backs of demand out of Montreal for people to fly south. But that demand has built an airport and those planes fly two directions. So that changes the arrival. We have a historic thing that people come into the Adirondacks, came from the big cities from the south, and the county looked like it was past the Adirondacks. People coming from the north, it was on the way to the Adirondacks, so you're coming through. Lake Champlain, Vermont out marketed the state of New York, state of New York. And people from the big cities, Boston, New York, assumed if you go into Lake Champlain, you went to Vermont. So all of those historic reasons to come here just didn't happen. Now we have the ability to talk to people by interest. We have the airport for them to fly into. We have, as of just recently, a lodging tax to get a budget to the table to talk to those people. And now it's time to look at product. What Michelle was saying is absolutely true, that current tourism, the trends are growing away from getting in a bus and look out the window as the bus drives past something or pull into a place like Fort Ticonderoga and leave again 90 minutes later. It's to engage in destinations over time, to learn, have a cerebral experience, have an interactive experience rather than experiences shallow and other than quick. This group of people, the planning committee, has been working for about six months now, really, really zeroed in on a plan that's, we've got two things I like in terms of tourism. The first side is that it's audacious enough, that there are reasons to get on our plans and come. We'll talk a little bit about why it's audacious enough. The second side of it is that it's practical enough, that there are real reasons to invest from the private sector side and the public sector side, to make them happen. It's not about Plattsburgh, it's about this whole zone where history really took place here and the whole county in terms of recreation. The major parts of that plan are history, outdoor recreation, especially in the short run focusing on cycling, paddling, and skiing, which is, which is an interesting thing. And those are there because they're low hanging fruits that we can look at without a lot of huge investment. History is the part that really is going to be the money maker for the region and the identity builder for the region, if you look a few years in the future or a long time in the future. First of all, the history here isn't just another thing in history. It's the history that built the future of really four nations. And it did take place, it was not something that sort of happened around here, this is the region where it took place. There is enough constituency for those wars, those battles out there, people who are interested in that, to drive a steady flow of history's flow along through. My company worked with the state of Wyoming and the state of Oregon during the 150th anniversary of the Oregon Trail. And the major patriots that came over to do that celebration were from Europe. It wasn't the United States people that followed it. There were a lot of people from the States that went out and found the places where their family had written on rocks as they followed the trail or buried their babies that were born and didn't make it along the way and so on. But the real volume of history and the people who spent money on those campaigns was from Europe. And it's time that those people were paying the way here. The other part of this plan that I just quickly want to jump into is the way we've built it, the things we're doing to activate it, are things that will create jobs and business opportunities for the people that work here now. And in a manner that allows young people to stay here, become part of the community in the long run, with families here, have the budget to do that, not just the, those jobs that you typically think are in tourism of the killing of rooms and making money streams. That's a quick summary. Terry, why don't you jump in with history? What we're gonna do. Try to be fast.
For me, this process really is similar to the way that I like to think that I've lived my life. It's a process that is involved in trying to become all you're capable of being. So this process examine all the assets of the community. And the plan is how to make those assets as valuable to tourists as possible. And so we looked at some of the natural resources, and they've already talked about that. But my favorite thing is the history. The nice thing about the history is that especially in the Battle of 18, the Battle of Plattsburgh, 1814, is shared by this whole strip of land from here to Plattsburgh. And we're looking at really trying to, when I was traveling with my kids when they were young, I went to Washington DC. And I went in the Smithsonian Institute, and some of you have probably done, walk in and see the Battle of Valcour displayed there. And I understand the competition to have square footage in there is very intense. And it led me to research about this stuff just for fun. And the Battle of Valcour, in Winston Churchill's words, "The Battle of Valcour was perhaps the most important naval battle in the history of the United States." And then the Battle of Plattsburgh, you know, really was ended by the Battle of Tourn in Plattsburgh, that these troops, as you'll probably all know, 7,000 marched from up here down Route 9 and 7,000 marched down Route 22 and they went camped up here. And, you know, it was a really historic battle also. So the first and last battle between English-speaking nations occurred in our community. And yet, if anybody travels through there, do they hear or see anything about it? So going back to, have we become all we're capable of being and, you know, trying to make ourselves attractive to tourism? You know, we haven't. So this process is about accomplishing that. So one of the things we're looking at is actually rebuilding the fleet and especially the way the Battle of Plattsburgh in 1814 was done, maybe even on a shallow pond with the boats roughly positioned in the positions they were during the battle. And, I mean, I think as more tourists come, everything becomes more feasible. And, you know, maybe there could be simulated battles on the hour, and you can have simulated cannon fire and all that. So, I mean, the brain, the main thing is the brainstorming has just started to play in the process. But one of the things that we decided on in our group, and you look around at other museums, is there has to be an immersive experience. You have to feel like you're, you know, can step back in time a little bit. And if you could walk from ship to ship off of bridging and go in and have the story told to you about what happened in that, in that battle as you pass through all these ships, I can even see in the beginning where we might build one and you would have future sight of this ship and future sight of that ship. And gradually, you know, we've basically tried to rebuild the whole fleet. And, I mean, it would be wonderful if Fort Montgomery could be a part of the experience because the more entertainment mass that you get from an attraction standpoint, the more of a draw you are. And you can certainly immerse yourself back in history if you walk through that fort. So, you know, that's, that's the basic concept. We're looking at trying to take those two battles and, you know, down the road, we'd like to build an interpreter center. That's quite a large amount of money. But, you know, I, one of the things when people say, where's the money gonna come from? I would like to think that this community, all of our community, the North Country, would say, we have enough pride that we want to take our place in history where we should be. And Plattsburgh deserves new mention among national historic sites. And if we all cooperate and invest in this, I strongly believe we can make it happen. So appreciate the time.
I just want to say one more thing and then if anybody from our group, because you guys went, so why are you here? And probably you scratched at your head. But really, I'm going to ask each of you to read through this through our bold document. You're gonna be surprised again, Bob, use the word of, of de, of deities. This is big thinking. That was one of our charges. Because you want, again, you're getting on a plane to go somewhere and spend a week or two weeks, or you're going back for the second or third time, which is our goal for those repeat visitors, it needs to be big. This is just that. We're talking about building, I mean, I think you said that, it stands to be, you know, building the entire British and American fleets. It's a huge opportunity. It's, you know, and having people actually pay to come here, roll up their sleeves and help build them, fill them with us, for us. But once you read this, you know, start, you know, a conversation among yourselves. Invite us back. Talk with us. Figure out where Rouse's Point fits in this. And that's what we're trying to do with every organization we talk to, with every business we talk to, the communities. We're meeting with a lot of different communities on Wednesday. You know, where do you fit into this? You guys have obviously, you know, the jet, I mean, the entire community is absolutely beautiful, but, you know, is it kayaking? I know you're putting new kayak ducks in. Maybe they're guided tours through that. Maybe that's, you know, your low hanging fruit, how we're gonna increase visitors to start. You know, so maybe we look at six months out and then six years out. But we're ready to be your partners in doing that and have those discussions. So again, I just ask you to take a look at this and when you're ready for us to come back as an entire committee and talk about it, we'd absolutely love to, you know, to start those conversations. So.
Can I jump in again?
Yeah. Come on up. I'm not so young.
We've talked a lot about visitor experience, but another piece to a tourism economy is where these people sleep, where they eat, how they get transportation to and from a place or within a place. We've looked carefully at the existing, current and competitive hotels and at the need to have more of those, especially along the waterfloods. Business travelers are very good at walking to something and interstate interchange. And leisure travelers would rather look at something a little better, more interesting than you on a highway. So the era is coming back that you had before the Northway came in, where your waterfront locations are going to be primary listed for lodging, for dining with the view. The, I see the roads that were essentially bypassed and the Northway became an efficient way is becoming the new roads that are really embraced, that become tourism corridors, that become scenic drives, that become bicycle routes, that become the access point to go paddling, that get tangled up into the way people spend time and where they spend time. And I see Rouse's Point actually, as we've looked at the county, as being ahead of the group instead of behind the group in terms of being ready to embrace that kind of investment and, and ready to, you know, to have those things happen. So I didn't want you to think it was all about this reenact the battle and let's go paddling and cycling, but it is about doing things that enable investment by the private sector, that create jobs, that take, we view tourism as an export business. It's really importing dollars that are earned somewhere else into your economy instead of recirculating the dollars that are already here. So it's creating those centers where those dollars can be transferred from wallets that people carry here and spend. We need to create not just things that they can do, but ways that they can do that that lead behind and create jobs.
I've got two things I just want to say real quick. One thing, it looks like Vikings, the way we treat you, like this past year was really good. Another thing we used here in the village, and you should really keep this in mind because it's something that would really reduce your labor cost, is we used the prison in Altoona to do a lot of work outside this year, and they're looking for projects during the winter to work on. You know, if you start with the bold project and you got it, the guys up there are quite handy. So, but you could use it not just in the summer, but all, even during the winter, they're looking for stuff to do. So, you know, just keep that in mind for your boss.
I absolutely hope so. And it's actually, those are kind of the kind of conversations that, you know, we've heard names come up, so and so's a shipbuilder, you know, he usually, he needs town to go build ships and then comes back. I'm like, well, why can't he be doing that here? So it's that kind of stuff that just, you know, we've talked with so many people and it's just making this process that much better. So it's been fantastic. So, but again, this is just the beginning. We, I think you all have invitations to our kickoff on Friday night. I know it's Friday night in December and you have nothing else to do. We would love to have you there. We're gonna be rolling this out in, in just grand style. We're very excited. And again, you know, this is the end of the process, it's just the beginning, so.
You know, the thing we have not talked about in this meeting that's important is agriculture. Because one of the key attributes of the county is that this is apple country, this is syrup country, this is dairy country and potential lots of great cheeses coming out of that. It's wine country, it's becoming wine country now. That is out there to be ignored or downplayed in this, it's starting to become a function of service moving forward in such a way that this beginning of a wine industry will have economic support to keep growing itself rather than having to build and build and build and then finally find a market, we'll drive it the other way. We've been working with the orchards, they'll all be, or a number of them, the tritiums roll out with things to be tasted and part of that. The whole sense is that the economy that we drive out of this should feed into the people that are here and the lifestyles that are here now and perpetuate those, not take it away and undo it. So, but it's part of the engineering.
Well, I think it's wonderful that people have a vision out there for the future of our communities and, you know, people don't, communities don't grow without people having a vision, so I commend you.
These people are ready to get to work. So we'll count on you maybe putting a few males in board too.
More have any other questions for us?
No.
I'll wait. I thank you very much for your nice presentation.
Thank you very much. More to come.
You're welcome to stay to a short meeting.
Back to the regular meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting, no, wait, comments for the public. Anybody wish to address the board may do so.
I have a couple of comments. In the meeting that we had, we talked about before, there was two comments by two different people. And one of them was, Rouse's Point looks great. And the other one was that we have a hidden jewel. And I think it's important that the board hears how people from the outside are looking at this village. And when somebody comes up from Plattsburgh and, you know, and says that how great the village looks, it's really, it's about the board, employees of the village and the residents that are making people look at us like that. And I think that, and I hear that a lot. I go to a lot of meetings and I hear a lot about how nice Rouse's Point looks. Another little part of this thing, and I know ours has most about it, they're, we have an opportunity with the Lake Stolox Group, and it's, has to do with geotourism. And they're working with the National Geographic, and we're gonna be able to post things on the National Geographic website, events in the village, or, you know, promote the marinas or promote everything that I don't know a lot about yet, it's just kind of starting up, and I think that's another plus for our area too. And anything that's good for us, or good for Plattsburgh is good for us. It all works together.
Thanks, Terry.
Thank you.
Way out. If not, time to chance to begin the meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting, board, you all got copies. Is there any additions or nominations?
We'll get a motion that we got from the legislature, please.
Moved by trustee, sure. Roberts, second by trustee Baker. Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, vote by your son of I. All opposed, vote carried. Bills, you all got copies of the bills. Is there any additions, aren't said?
We don't have any to consider.
Thank you, sir.
I'll make a motion, pay the bills tonight. Second.
One person. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your son of I.
Aye.
Opposed, vote carried. Correspondents?
I have one item tonight. It's, dear mayor and trustees, we wish to inform you of a new member who has been approved to our company for a probationary period of six months pending completion of his arson check. And that's Bush Janett, 64 Church Street, Rouse's Point, New York. And please act on this member as soon as possible, and this can demonstrate.
I'll make a motion to accept a new member tonight.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Akro. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote by your son of I.
Aye.
Opposed, vote carried. Reported by mayor and board trustees. Resolution on property tax cap and must, a must, include mandate relief. Conference of mayors are pushing this. All communities should push this, as this bill has been out there, it's been battered around, and they want to put a cap of property tax and mandate relief. There's enough things out there, the state mandates, that if they get away with, would help communities tremendously. Carol, you wanna read the resolution, please?
Whereas the level of property taxation throughout New York has reached dangerously high levels. Whereas New York leads the nation in property taxes simply because we lead the nation in imposing inefficient state mandates on our local governments. And whereas two of the largest components of every municipal budget over which local officials have little control, pension payments and health insurance costs are increasing in exorbitant rates. And whereas in the case of pension costs, bills from the state retirement system were increased by an average of 40% in both 2011 and 2012. And whereas state laws pertaining to the collective bargaining of contracts between municipalities and employer unions, particularly those pertaining to firefighters and police officers, do not allow local officials to reasonably control the costs such contracts impose on property taxpayers. And whereas as a solution to New York's property tax crisis, the governor of New York and the New York State Legislature will in 2011 consider enactment of legislation imposing a cap on the annual growth in property taxes. And whereas a property tax cap will only work if it is simultaneously accompanied by a repeal of current state mandates that require local governments to increase spending in property taxes. And whereas a property tax cap without repeal of costly state mandates will, by definition, lead to drastic cuts in essential local services and dramatic layoffs of municipal employees. Now therefore be it resolved that the village of Rouse's Point, with the governor of state of New York and the members of the New York State Senate and New York State Assembly, must reform the cost drivers that lead to high property taxes in New York, including pension benefits, health insurance costs, and the collective bargaining process, as a central element of any effort to provide overdue property tax relief to residents and businesses of New York. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the governor, senate majority and minority leaders, assembly speaker and minority leader, Senator Betty Little, member of the Senate. Little, member of the assembly Janet Uprich, and the New York State Conference of Mayors. And this resolution shall take effect immediately before going, question of the foregone was duly put to a roll call vote. Do you need a motion?
Absolutely.
I'll sign.
I'll suck it up.
Seconded by trustee Jefferson, roll call vote. Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Huckrow.
Aye.
And next thing on my agenda, while we're on this, I got an email today, the state, there's a bill in the senate and the assembly to mandate fair labor wages for service personnel. In other words, as you know, if you have put a contract out there that you have to pay just the union way, union scales, regardless if you have a union contractor or not. So it stops small contractors from bidding on anything. Now they want to apply that to restaurant workers, cafeteria workers, janitors. That bill is there. I think we ought to send those, and we're not in favor of that either.
This raises the price of the car.
Yes. The four taxpayers, one, they're going to end up paying. Okay. In the mail, with your light bill, the residents got a notice that we're starting another compact fluorescent bulb drive. You'll come into the village office sometime after today?
Bulbs are here yet.
Yeah, I know, they're, they're underway. And you'll receive two free compact fluorescent bulbs if you're a rent payer in the village of Rouse's Point. Also, you'll know about the appliance program and the insulation program that we have started. I think we're up to about fifty homes being done. So there's ninety on the list. Eventually they'll all get done. We're insulated these houses free of charge to reduce energy costs. Okay. That's it for me. Trustee Jefferson.
Well, thank you, Mayor Rush. I have nothing to report to me.
Thank you, trustee Jefferson. Trustee Baker.
I'm just informed by Ray that they've, they want to put up a set of lockers upstairs and a pocket hook.
We need to have our engineer look at that because of load limit.
All right. No, he just, they wanted to know if we could.
We did through this one before.
It wasn't built for double layer.
Wasn't built for weight like that.
So we'd have to run steel beams to make us, I mean, just to get up there is not a problem.
No.
But to put a bunch of people up there.
No, they just asked for the, pretty sure it's a meeting here, so.
We'll have, we'll have the engineer take a look at it.
After we got the engineer to take a look, we should actually have a little fact or name where you'll have a reference to future maximum load weight.
Oh, yeah.
One per pound, per foot. That way you post it all the time and you won't have to.
Go down here.
It's just walk, I mean, it's just blocks on the inside, so it's really, you know.
We're going to have the engineer look at it, let's take, pull it in with it.
And trustee Baker?
Yep.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Roberts.
Yeah, I have a few things. You, you all have a copy of the agreement between the, the village, Rouse's Point and the town, Champlain EMI Commission. I would like to, just a reminder that the costs are now being split seven ways instead of five ways as in the previous years because we've added Shazie and Albert to this cost. So I'd like to make a motion that we allow the mayor to sign this agreement.
Second. Moved by trustee Roberts, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by you to stand by.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Next thing on my agenda, I'd like to remind residents that the parking ban is now in effect as of December first right through until March 31st, and the hours are 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. And this is to allow for official plowing the streets and to prevent damage to any private vehicles during plowing or sanding operation. And also, we'd like to remind residents, or ask to make sure that cars parked in driveways do not block the sidewalks. So do not park on the streets. And the only other thing that I'd like to say is I echo what Jerry said about the way the village looks. I'd like to commend the village employees for the decorations. I think they look real, really, the village looks nice. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, trustee Roberts. Trustee Huckrow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things. First off, we have a memorandum of affiliation concerning the EMS program, and since we have Walt here, Walt, you probably know more about this than anybody else. Can you address it a little bit?
Okay, be happy to. Under the Department of Health, the state health, public health law, under the, I don't know, thirty, every EMS agency is mandated to have, not a mandate, Mr. Mayor, is mandated to have a.
Medical director.
And we have been fortunate since this came into effect to have, I mean, graciously granted a medical director status by Dr. Hartung, who was the medical director at CBTH for their EMS. However, he has left that agency, as we discussed before, several months ago when we made appointment of Dr. Southwood to this position. He's left the, the job, and we now are faced with having to hire one. Dr. G S F D Ventry has taken over as the medical director for the EMS of C, EMT to CBTH and any of their contract agencies. In other words, those that contract to CBTH for part-time or full-time coverage. He has agreed, however, to take on a few other agencies, one being Rouse's Point, at what I consider to be a rather low rate. The rate is, has been determined to be based on the previous year's number of patients multiplied by four dollars divided by twelve, and that's the amount I think you will get each month. Considering the fact that we run somewhere between two hundred and thirty and two hundred and fifty patients a year, that means that we max out at a thousand dollars or it might be less than last year, I think we had two hundred and thirty of us, patients. So that's where it sits, but there is one other part of this memorandum that was incomplete at the time I reviewed it, so I'm not sure exactly what it says, but I believe it's probably a prorated reimbursement for some of the expenses. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
Any other questions?
I didn't have the last part added.
The last part, there is one, there are two places, two places there where it states what the reimbursement is going to be. One is that prorated cost that I mentioned. But when I reviewed it, the, the copy that we got from the attorney was missing the end of the sentence.
Yeah, and that hasn't been corrected yet.
It hasn't, okay.
As a minor detail.
We're still, we're still not sure yet. I, I'm pretty sure what it is, is the prorated expenses versus he is mandated as part of this agreement to attend the regional medical directors advisory cons meetings, which are held usually in Queensberry, in Lance Falls. So expenses that he would incur to go something like that. My opinion is that this, when this gets added, is that those expenses will be prorated amongst the different agencies, CBTHs, Champlain EMS, the village of Rouse's Point. But I think that this, this contract and the amount that we're going to be paying here is, is quite reasonable compared to what I've seen in contracts that other agencies are paying, what they're paying, even those that are paying on a prorated by call basis are, are paying more than we're going to be paying, so I think it's rather reasonable. And unfortunately, it's absolutely mandated. We have no choice. We either have a medical director or else we take the cheese and put them on the desk with the ambulance and don't run.
Yes. Is any part of the doctor's liability, I mean, is that part of the, I mean, his medical liability umbrella clause, does that also protect us also?
It doesn't protect us. Actually, our insurance can protect him. The med, the liability is rather like. We operate under his license, but we also operate under the mandates of the Department of Health. We operate under protocols which are established by the regional medical advisory committee. The only, the only thing that, where he would be possibly held liable would be if he reviews our, we have to have what we call a mega code every, twice a year, where we have to establish, especially at the critical care level, the advanced EMT level, we have to establish that we can meet certain criteria, that we can perform certain functions, and that has to be approved by the medical advisor. So if he was, if he was approving people that were incompetent and it was established that they were incompetent at the time he approved them, then I suppose, yes, he could be held liable. But that's rather remote and very, very unusual. It'd be a very, very rare occasion. And he does have his own medical coverage, but we don't, we don't gain coverage under his coverage. Our coverage is gained under our own insurance.
This stuff we have to do every year? We have to budget for this?
I believe this advise, memorandum of association is set for three years.
Yes.
So that would be, yeah, in this case.
The number first, in 2010, and the number very first in 2013. And the sentence that Walter is talking about, look at three point, one point two. The sentence is left up in the air, if you read it. And I haven't had a chance to talk to the attorney about it yet, but I don't think that's a, a major thing. I think it's just a.
I'm pretty sure it's a reimbursement for extraordinary expenses.
Thank you, Walt. I would like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the memorandum of affiliation with the EMS director.
Excuse me, are, are you going to wait and sign it?
Yes, I'll wait till, till I get to talk to Bernay.
Okay, and then you have it done in proper form before you sign it? Okay.
I'll suck it up.
Moved by trustee Huckrow, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Any other discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by you to stand by.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Also, I'd like to inform the board that we're in the process of setting up a meeting with the private department committee on the tax exemption program. In the next couple of days, I'm hoping, and by and all that's going to be. And also, I'd like to request an executive session to this, plus, hold a vote first now.
Second. Moved by trustee Huckrow, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Roll call vote. Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Huckrow.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, trustee Huckrow. Carol, do you have any words to whisper for us?
Well, I just want to thank everybody who helped with our celebration this weekend. Jerry, Arsen, electric crew, water plant, Santa Claus, Brad Martin.
Santa Claus.
Yeah, and everybody that helped out.
Is he going to grant you your wishes, Santa Claus?
I hope so.
I think she was sitting on this.
No, I was just there. I was there. But no, everybody helped out and it was, it turned out.
It went very well.
Yeah, it did.
Arsen?
I don't have anything.
Very good. Walter? Okay, just a couple of quick comments. As you know, last weekend, we had the CP holiday train, which was super successful, about four hundred people in attendance to it. And then last night, we had the Marine Corps League Toys for Tots train here, and they unloaded about seven thousand toys here. Amazing. And that went very well.
The CP train, we actually got a whole pickup truck full of food that was donated to the local shelter.
Plus they gave a thousand dollars to CP Day. With that, open a meeting to the public. Anybody who wish to address the board may do so.
I have one more quick question. This, these compact light bulbs, does the village have a way for the residents to dispose?
Yes, it's on the letter, on the letter that went out in the light bills this past week.
Okay.
Says, if you have a bad bulb, bring it into the village, there's a disposal bucket right there. Put it in the bucket.
If they last five to seven years, so, you know, they last.
And we ship them out free of charge to some company. It's all taken care of. But instead of throwing them in the garbage, please bring them in because they are hazardous waste if you throw it to landfill.
I think that helps.
With that, I'll take a motion for recess.
Got it.
Got it.
Huckrow and Baker.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's see who's coming. I told you to be sure.
Not bad.
Nice to see you, guys.